For the November 7th, 2022 meeting of the West Bridgewater School Committee, please rise. Listening to Matters of those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting, not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being shown live on cable and is being livestreamed on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org. The recording of this meeting will also be available on wb-cam.org. First, I'd like to introduce Ms. Grace Pollan to the committee. Grace, thank for taking the time to be here. Next up is the approval of minutes from our October 3rd meeting. I would like to make a motion to accept the October 3rd meeting's minutes as presented. Can I have a second? Move second and discussion. Pollan, favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's update. Parent-teacher conferences. Which principal wants to go first? Ms. Goulet, thank you.
Eighteenth, all of the schools have sent out information. The elementary schools are doing their conferences from 1:00 to 3:00 on the eighteenth. It's a half day of school for students. On Monday, the 21st, I believe it is, is 5:00 to 7:00. And then Tuesday, depending on the teacher, has also scheduled a two-hour block for conferences.
That's it. Next up, flex school seating. We have Roselle McDonald, Ms. Goulet, and Ms. Allen.
Okay, good start. Go ahead. I am Karen Als, third grade teacher at the Rose McDonald School. Asked to come here tonight just to share a little bit about flexible seating. About 10 years ago, which was halfway through my teaching career, I had found that students were having such a hard time with sitting still and producing the way that I wanted them to, and I started to research kind of what was out there that I could do to help them and came across some research on flexible seating, which is where desks are removed and alternate seating is put in there. So I went to then-principal Linda Dubin and asked her if I could possibly try this out a little bit with my kids, and she agreed that I could pilot it. She would agree to anything if she could call it a pilot. And so we started with desks in September through December. When the kids came back from Christmas that year, the desks were removed and flexible seating was in place. All of the things that I had gotten at that time were things that were donated to the classroom from friends, family, parents. And I had started collecting data before we had the flexible seating and afterwards. And the changes in my classroom were drastic. I had found that before flexible seating, kids were getting up to sharpen pencils approximately 40 to 50 times a day. They were using the bathroom at huge rates. And things, just as getting a drink of water or getting a tissue, the numbers were really high. After flexible seating, I found the first week, on an average, a pencil was sharpened four times a day because it just so happened that the pencil was actually broken. And so I really started to see that the kids were using these things just as movement breaks. And so bringing in the flexible seating, allowing the kids to move around the room, really made a difference. All of their test scores went up at least 10% and stayed that way throughout the school year. So kept with flexible seating. Mrs. Dubin had seen the change in my classroom, the change in the students, and decided to let me continue that until obviously COVID hit. That is when I had to remove everything.
Well, the, you know, principal had to come in and unfortunately say that a lot of the seating arrangements had to be removed. And I have to say, the McDonald School was pretty far. The flexible seating was across a lot of different classrooms. And when COVID hit, we had to look at the seating arrangements and the couches and the cushions had to be removed because we had to maintain a certain amount of feet away from each other. And I tell this story, and if Mr. Bodwell was here, he'd remember. It was the summer before we came back after we left, so it was summer of 2020. And Mr. Bodwell and the principals are going around to all the schools looking at, how are we going to make this happen? How many people can we fit in a classroom? And in walks Karen, holding these two, and you'll see them in the video, beautiful chairs that were going to go in her classroom. And Mr. Bodwell turned to me and said, "You're going to have to tell her that they can't go." I'm like, "I can't break her heart."
Their high heels. Their shoes that are high heels.
But, yep, so we're back to flexible seating. And PTO was extremely gracious last year and funded a huge portion of the flexible seating across the entire third grade. So Ms. Als had a lot of this already in place, so her room is the most ahead of everyone else in the flexible seating, but thanks to the PTO last year, we can make it look the way it is.
Yeah, every third-grade classroom has some type of flexible seating, whether it's standing desks, couches, buoy stools that move. A bunch of second-grade classrooms also got some of the flexible seating, so it's definitely starting to have a trickle effect, which is what I was hoping to see. And we have a video of my room, and kids will kind of tell you a little bit about what flexible seating is, and you'll see especially my beautiful high heels.
My favorite place to sit is here because I'm the most comfortable place and the members are so concerned about me. When Ms. Als tells us to go where we work the best, she means like we have to go where no one's going to talk to us.
Love the next class.
Flexible seating is better than desks because it allows you to choose where you would like to go and it tells you that you can make your own choices in that spot. When it's time to work, we grab our clipboards, grab a pencil, and work where we and go where we work best.
Those are shoes. There they are.
And I think what you can see in that video too, which is great, is you still have some traditional seating. So some students, you know, might need to sit in a traditional desk and chair for math, but be okay for ELA with a different seating. So those options are there as well.
Right, I think the best part of it for me is when you hear the kids, I tell them all the time, is go where you work the best. In the beginning of the school year, they just run to the favorite spot, the most popular spot, and then they start to realize that that's not best for me. I'm not doing really well there. Maybe it's too soft, it's too comfy. So they start to understand themselves even as learners of where am I best and making those choices that I'm not going to sit next to my best friend. I'm going to go where I can actually get my work done, where I feel secure. So seeing them make those kind of decisions for themselves is really amazing as well. So big shout out to PTO again for helping me out with getting back to flexible seating and bringing it back to the kids of WB.
Any questions?
So, I love this, you know I love this. And so I want to say thank you for doing it 10 years ago so that you're leading the way. You know my child loves to move. And I think the research says something like 40 minutes is the most time to sit, and then you're probably saturated. So to see this integrated so well in the classroom and knowing that we have an expert in the district who's able to say, "Hey, this is how it works." You know, it makes me really proud of the district and it's really happy for our kids. So I'm going to put this lay on spot.
Great.
That's okay. Can you give a general idea? I know I've seen Ms. Als' room, so I imagine it even looks much even more amazing three years later. Approximately how much flexible seating do you have in your grade?
Sure, so every classroom has a little bit. So like I can think of a couple first-grade classrooms right now who are, you know, experimenting with the wobble seats. And I think at least what we've seen at the McDonald School is as the students get older, they have that little bit more responsibility. So you see it more in the upper, in the third grade than right now. And like we said, we had a former third-grade teacher last year who moved out to second grade. She moved some of the flexible seating with her, and you're starting to see a spread. I have to say, before COVID, I think every classroom had something that was not traditional, whether it's, you know, a yoga ball to sit on, or like I said, a wobble seat, or cushions, or, you know, our custodians weren't very happy with us sometimes, but we'd bring in, you know, like an oversized chair. And when those, so we're slowly getting it back, so I don't have a percentage, but I'd say every single classroom has at least something, a beanbag, a couple of beanbags. You know, you're more likely now to see kiddos, like we said, it might not just be the seating, but the opportunity to lay on the rug with a clipboard to do their math instead of sitting with, you know, their feet on the floor pushed up into their desks. So it's growing.
I'm always thinking, so my mindset here, my mindset right now, where my questions are coming from are resources. You know, I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that.
Yes.
Do we have all of these desks? And are they the best place for our kids to learn? Or do we need to think about that in the budget season? Looking at what we need right now.
I'm 100% on board with you.
Absolutely. And that's the other thing too, is just making sure. Like I said, when I first started this, I got donations from places, but that wasn't school-owned property. So when COVID came, it was my responsibility to store it, get rid of it, which I didn't have the space to do. But now that everything is purchased through PTO, it's now school property, it belongs to the school. So even when I leave, hopefully someone will take over that flexible seating kind of idea and keep it going.
And I just love what you said about learning where you learn, or discovering where you learn best.
Yep.
You know, that's my big sort of thought, is making sure we're teaching these self-skill. My kids need to know how they are the best learner. And for most of us, it's not sitting still the best. And so we need to allow them that opportunity to learn this.
I can give you one more quick thing before I move on. I had a student when I first started, and we had all this great stuff, couches and seats and beanbag chairs, and he always just laid on the bare floor. And I was like, "Dude, we have rugs. Do you want to go sit on a rug? Do you want to go sit on a pillow? Do you want a blanket under you? Something like, get off the dirty floor." And he's like, "Nope, I want to be here, I want to be here." And finally, one day, I said, "Why? Why do you want to be there?" And he says, "I run hot. This is the coolest place." And I said, "That makes so much sense because how hard is it to work when you're always overheated?" And the bare floor was a nice, cool spot where he could bring it down. And I said, "You know what? You just taught me something in my own room. I'm thinking, get off the dirty floor." And he's like, "Oh, it's cold." So, I mean, really kind of opened my eyes too, how these kids are as learners, so.
Well, I think what you did too is you, it's not just the seating, it's you really transformed the backdrop, you know, behind the seating as well.
She has a theme every year. Always wait to see what the theme is.
Yeah, I mean, it takes a lot of training, it takes a lot of practice. They have to learn where the materials are, sharing of materials, how do we operate? A lot of people think like they just get to sit wherever they want, and it's like a free-for-all, but it's really very structured, just unstructured seating arrangements.
Well, and I think about all the interpersonal skills they have to practice, learning that what they want to sit in is not available. You have to negotiate, you need to go share, you need to go take your turn. I mean, there's so much social-emotional learning integrated just in flexible seating.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Next up, we have Elise Wolf Consulting, Mrs. Margaret.
Good evening. So I met Elise Wolf through actually an Inclusion Matters workshop a couple of years ago. I'm going to tell you a little bit about her and her colleague Jen O'Rourke, who's joining us through a grant this year and hopefully for more, three more years afterwards. We're thinking it might be a four-year grant, which is fantastic. So Elise is the Senior Program Manager, Child Services, and Aspire Works through Mass General. She provides parent coaching, school-based consultation, and professional development services. She's recognized for her work supporting school districts, community organizations, and corporations to enhance their inclusion practices and foster healthy social-emotional development and self-awareness. Elise has specific expertise in inclusive practices, program design, social-emotional learning, tools to build independence, and strategies for executive functioning. She received her undergrad degree in psychology and theater arts from Emory University and her master's in special ed from Leslie University. Jen O'Rourke, she's the Associate Program Manager for Child Services. Before going to Aspire, Jen facilitated an inclusion-based program in the District of Columbia School System. I didn't have a headshot for her, sorry. I looked. With a focus on teaching social thinking and executive functioning skills to elementary-age children with high cognitive spectrum disorder. Jen believes in a teaching approach that values the development of the whole child. She received her undergrad degree in psychology and earned her master's degree of science, sorry, master's of science degree in applied behavioral analysis from Northeastern University. So, some of the things that we've done so far, we had Elise, Jen just joined Elise this year, but last year, we had Elise come to the district and provide professional development on parent collaboration and inclusion practices. She provided professional development and training to the admin team over the summer in regards to inclusive practices and our roles. She's providing professional development this year. The first half, she's been up here at the middle, senior high school on our Wednesdays. And the second half of the year, she'll be, her and her colleague will be at the elementary school. She's also doing these wonderful in-person observations for the classrooms. And the thing about Jen is she's relatable with the teachers. So she's able to provide them with a toolbox of strategies that they're open to hearing and they're putting into practice. It's really great to watch. She's providing the admin team with feedback as far as what she's thinking. She's got great insight. Moving on, sorry. The other thing that we had, we had 10 hours, and because of the way the half-days fell, we had two extra hours. So I reached out to Inclusion Matters and asked if we could spend one hour of it helping our kids and teens manage their stress and anxiety for the parents, providing a webinar that's on the 29th, I believe, yeah, the 29th, 7 to 8. So I'm hoping people will join us then, and then she will do the same one in the springtime. So it's through a grant. She approached us after being in our district, which was really great, in providing professional development for us. So she asked us if we'd join her in the grant, no cost to the district. She got the grant. She shared over the summer with our admin team that she believes it'll be a multi-year grant. She'll find out more in the spring. We're hoping it will be. We'd like to keep her around. We'll see. Do you have any questions? Yep.
Next up is multilingual family night.
So, and on October 5th, we had a multilingual family night. Mary Pistarino worked hard and planned this event, and we presented to our multilingual families. And Mary has done a lot of behind-the-scenes work. She is a phenomenal resource and a phenomenal asset. So we had a parent liaison and a school staff member that interpreted for us, saving us money because when we hire interpreters, it's about $200. So Mary had reached out to parents earlier in the year and asked if anybody would be interested in being a translator for our events. And we have a wonderful parent that has stepped up and is translating Portuguese for us. And then we had a staff member who is fluent in Spanish, and she translated Spanish for us that night. We talked about the ins and outs of school procedures and policies, and that was very eye-opening for the parents because they didn't know a lot of how to get in contact with teachers, how to navigate the library, how to navigate Aspen. So there was a lot of discussion. Mary presented community resources to the families. We also talked about building literacy in their home language because research has shown that it's hugely beneficial to learn in their own language and to develop their home language. We discussed the importance of keeping and developing that language. And we also discussed the seal of bilinguality for students who speak two languages. We shared websites and information on how to raise bilingual children. And the families asked many questions through the interpreter, and I think because the interpreter was a parent, they felt comfortable doing that. Mary and I feel that the families left that night seeing themselves as a valuable and integral part of our school community and that they will be heard. They also want to start an LPAC similar to a SPED PAC. We don't need to have one unless we have 100 students. We're getting there, but they were interested in starting one. So there's lots of, Mary reached out to the public library. She's working with them to bring Lionbridge a translation service to them, which is very easy to use. You call and they interpret for you on the phone. She's working with them to increase their books in the native languages spoken by our families. So lots of good things in the works with our multilingual families. Any questions?
You mentioned that they were asking what questions, what kind of questions were they going?
How they can contact their child's teacher to learn how well their child's doing in school, things that you wouldn't necessarily think of that might come easy to us. But Aspen was one of the big ones, how to navigate Aspen, how to translate documents. We're going to be looking at getting, sending out an app later called Talking Points. That's still in the works, but it'll translate a conversation. So it will enable two-way conversations, so it's not just the parents asking the teacher's question. It'll be, they can have a conversation through text or, so it's email. Yep, so we're going in the right direction. I think I have to stay up because I think MCAS is next. So MCAS results. State results of the spring 2022 MCAS tests were mixed. Math and science scores statewide improved from 2021 while ELA scores declined statewide, and our scores fell right in line with the state. So the slide up there shows how our district compared to 2022. Our students in the exceeding expectations category decreased. Our meeting, students in the meeting expectations also decreased. Our partially-meeting students increased, and not-meeting also increased. We did have a better participation rate this year than last year. In math, we did better, just like the state. Exceeding stayed the same, now this is district-wide. Exceeding stayed the same. Meeting expectations increased. Partially-meeting increased, and then not-meeting increased as well. And then science and engineering and technology, we went down in exceeding expectations. We went down in meeting expectations. We went up in partially-meeting, and we went up in not-meeting. Again, participation rate was better this year. The next slide, it's kind of hard to look at, but basically it breaks down how each grade level did for meeting and exceeding. So we, in meeting and exceeding, we, again, ELA was not great this year. But we went down, the state went down, but we went down more in every grade level, just about. Next grade? Can we go to the next one? Partially-meeting, those numbers increased. We want to see those numbers decrease. Same thing with not-meeting on the next slide. In math, we did better. So in math and meeting exceeding, we went up two percentage points over the state, over last year, but the state went up eight percentage points. But we were in the positive for most grade levels. Partially-meeting, those numbers went up again. And then not-meeting, we were mixed. So not great, but the state wasn't great as well. And the state sent out a press release, and it said that to take these with knowing that how the students have, you know, what they've gone through in the last few years. And they show it may take a few years for students to recover academically from the COVID-19 pandemic, which I believe is going to happen. And the state's also releasing accountability data, but under the federal flexibility granted for one year, DESI will report less accountability data than usual. So you won't see as much accountability data if you go on DESI. Any questions?
No, I mean, I think, I think, you know, to panic over numbers like this would be reactionary considering it's one of the kids of Donald last couple of years, so.
Yeah, and we're, you know, we're heading in the right direction with our new ELA, all our new ELA initiatives, especially at the elementary level. So we're heading in the right direction. So now the principals are going to join, come up and talk about their action plans.
So of course, in response to our MCAS scores, each building created an action plan. We know that we have a new ELA program, which we're excited about. And I think we're going to see in over the next couple of years, our scores really increase just for what we're seeing in the classroom, what the students are doing already. The language that they're using and discussing in the classroom is far above what we've done the last couple of years, so we're excited about that.
The alignment's big too.
Yes.
Between the two schools.
So obviously, we reviewed the data, the superintendent, Debbie, the principals, ITLs, classroom teachers, and we looked at where our focus areas should be, or where they are. We looked at item analysis, so DESI releases questions under standards and where we fall. So like there might be geometry. We know that third grade geometry is a weak area. And we can actually pull open the questions and see, and we can actually see how the students respond. So what pieces are they missing? Where's the disconnect? So that's something that we are doing in common planning time with the teachers just to make sure, not necessarily adding something in addition to, but really strengthening what the teachers are already doing. And then we created, along with the teachers, some action plans with some really hard deadlines in progress monitoring throughout the year to keep making sure that we're up to par in meeting what we want to.
You said pretty much everything, but yeah, and so the plans have been creative, they've been implemented. They're usually targeted during our Tier Two time, which can happen in the classroom, and it can also happen during win block and so on. So they're being implemented and targeted daily. Like Principal Goulet said, we have a progress monitoring cycle that happens about six to eight weeks where we review the MCAS previous data, how it's looking and aligning with our current STAR data and other assessments to see some of the growth and where we need to continue to follow. Also, all the last year's MCAS data is readily accessible on the website. If you type in SC Rose, SC Howard, and if you want to see, because the strands you'll see are pretty big. You'll see we were right there, we're either above by, say, 2%, maybe down by 2%. And then you'll see a couple where, okay, those are our real target ones. So when we're talking about our action plans of where our focus ones, that we really, oh, there was a big gap, those are the ones that we're emphasizing. It could even be in morning work when they come in and we're spiraling through certain information that we really want to hit upon extra because they're going to get it, but we need to get it more, and then we also need to get it at where each child is. And then I think, you know, the collective goal, it's tied to our educator evaluation, it's also tied to the principals' goals. So when we talk about collective efficacy and saying, okay, we had some really good things that happened, but we obviously, our goal each year is to... but we obviously, our goal each year is to, if our student status better, it means that they learn some more this year. So it's not just the teachers' goals, it's all of our goals. So we either hit them together. And when we're creating it together and working together, it's not just isolated to one set of staff in the building. Any questions?
Thank you. So we are continuing with our Planning for Success. We actually have a meeting tomorrow. It's Planning Team Retreat Number Three. Tomorrow, we'll look at the data and root cause analysis and draft some strategic objectives and some strategic initiatives. And then, as Mark has said in the past, there are 31 members on the team, including central administrators, building administrators, middle, senior, high school coordinators, the elementary instructional team leaders, students, parents and school committee members. Mark had sent out a survey. He said it's not too late for feedback. So if you haven't filled out the survey, you can fill it out. We have stakeholders at each school where they were asked about their thoughts for future improvement. And all survey results and information was shared with the Planning for Success team. So we went over that information the last meeting and looked at it. The meeting before the admin team met and we did a lot of work. I just lost my train of thought. But SWAT, the SWAT analysis, we've done a SWAT analysis. That was what we did with the two times ago, yep. I think that's it. Oh, what was I going to... There was something I needed to say that's not up there. It'll come to me when I sit down. Kevin, do you have anything to add?
No, I think it's a great opportunity. I think it's been great to work and collaborate with everyone. I mean, I don't get that opportunity often to sit and really listen to. Because there's, like you said, there's a cross-reference of people, there's parents, there's administrators, there's teachers. So really just work together towards a common goal, which.
Right, and what's the common goal is what we want West Bridgewater Public Schools to look like in 2027. Not what we're doing now, but what do we want the schools to look like in 2027? Anything else? Yeah, there's been a lot of common themes, even when we have gone into small groups and come back as a whole. There's common themes and threads throughout each of those small groups. So those are what we're working on and addressing. Any questions?
Next up, we have the Special Education Stabilization Reserve Fund.
Good evening. As you may remember, in May of 2020, the town established a special education reserve fund. And that fund, we're able to add to when there's additional monies, either free cash, additional budget money from the school. And that's a fund that can help us in emergencies for special education costs. And as we increasingly run into unbudgeted special education costs, this fund becomes more important. In reviewing some of our older warrant accounts, we noticed that there is a net amount of about $91,000 remaining in a warrant account that is no longer used. We've changed the process so that we can track individual warrants with individual accounts. And this particular account has, it's a net amount. There's no way to determine which particular warrant the remaining $91,000 belongs to. And it goes as far back as 1998. So I worked with the town accountant just to see if we could tease out any more specifics on it. And it would be an enormous project. So what the recommendation is, she and I kind of thought the best bet would be to request a transfer, most likely at the May town meeting in May of 2023, to move those funds to increase the Special Education Stabilization Fund. It's no additional money being spent by the town as this warrant money was already, you know, given to the school and voted on in previous town meetings. So that would be my recommendation to the school committee. We can revisit it again, but for the May 2023 annual town meeting. Any questions?
I know the spreadsheet you shared.
Yes.
That our amount would still be far below even the new cap, 4%.
So the new cap is, I think it was 5%, right? All those proposals at your school committee conference passed. So they weren't specific in whether was, the cap was going to be 5% of budgeted net school spending or actual net school spending. Either way, I believe at 5%, our cap, you know, is around $850,000. So it would be wonderful if we could meet that and have that reserve, but obviously we don't. So we have plenty of cap room. Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you.
Student report, Ms. Ford.
Green Street School, preschool is four pumpkins in the month of October. We identify the parts of a pumpkin in our pumpkins. We're observing the life cycle of a pumpkin by observing how a pumpkin decomposes and when it sees we grow it to a different place. Pre-K2 is working on dynamic awareness skills using the HIGR program in both pre-K1 classes. Explore dynamic awarenesses through hands-on learning activities such as rhyming and syllable games throughout their school day. Kindergarten students have really taken a liking to the HIGR program, which provides them with a daily practice on their dynamic awareness skills. Letter names, keyword pictures and letter sounds are being systematically taught during daily foundation lessons. As part of our new program, Weight and Wisdom, kindergarten is hard at work noticing and wondering about text and visual art, talking about stories and drawing and writing about their findings. Kindergartners have been working with numbers zero to 10 to compare sets of objects and numbers, counting to 100 and reviewing two-dimensional shapes. They have also been working hard to learn about our community, community helpers, weather observations and changes in the life cycle of a pumpkin. Their days in kindergarten are busy and filled with learning that is engaging and meaningful. Rose on McDonald's. The students at McDonald's School just completed the first reading challenge of the school year. During the month of October, our students read for a total of 1,241 hours and 15 minutes. Students excitedly handed in 4,965 leaves representing their time, reading and the leaves were displayed on classroom trees. Everyone enjoyed watching the trees grow. The month of October was dedicated to learning how we can show respect to our classmates and teachers. Every Monday and Friday, student volunteers share their thoughts on what respect means to them during the morning announcements. The month of November will be spent learning about ingenuity. The last week of October was busy with lots of Halloween activities in the classroom and everyone is excited for the first grade Halloween parade. We had a lot of creative costumes this year. Howard. On Friday, October 28th, the school celebrated their school spirit with a Halloween costume contest and grade-level assemblies focusing on topics of being yourself or doing the right thing. The day also ended with the school's monthly pride raffles. On Halloween, the high school seniors continued their tradition of a Halloween parade at the Howard School. Howard students were filled with energy while engaging with the senior students. Captains from the fall sports teams from Middle School High School came to the Howard School to read to our fourth and fifth grade students and host a Q and A with our sixth graders. The Howard students enjoyed the experience and look forward to a happy weekend in the winter. Grade five students visited Sturridge Village on a field trip and learned about life during the 1800s. The field trip was interactive and the students all performed activities from the 1800s. The Howard School Student Council finished their Pan Drive and donated over 1,000 candles to the pumpkin tree. Middle School High School. The contemporary global affairs class walked in council on agents to sit and talk with our veterans. There was a great discussion and lots of experiences were shared. Thank you to our vets for their service. The class of 2023 held their annual Halloween parade to the elementary schools on Monday. It was fun to see all the smiling faces of the kiddos, both young and older, as they paraded around. The admissions counselor Derek Ferris from Southeastern came to meet with the middle school students to talk about Southeastern and programs that are offered. Captains of the fall sports teams had the opportunity to visit the Howard School during power blocks this week. Our student athletes read to the fourth and fifth grade students and held Q and A with the sixth grade students about expectations that sort of at the Middle School High School. The middle school power block challenge continued with an assembly for a donut eating contest, wrap-a-moni contest, and announced the pumpkin contest winners.
Thank you. Moving on to business, donation of the scoreboard. Ms. Outerbridge?
Good evening. My name's Jack Outerbridge. I'm here tonight on behalf of my son Matthew. Matthew's a 2022 graduate of West Bridgewater High School. Last year for Matt's senior project, he decided that he wanted to fundraise for a scoreboard for the baseball field. He was, pretty big project and he was able to fundraise almost $7,000 to do that. Also, he secured the help of Do It All Electrical, Justin May with May's Property Services and Turner Steel to donate all of their time, their labor. Unfortunately, the weather has not been cooperating with this. It's been a little wet to bring equipment onto the field to actually finish installation, but it is probably about 50% done right now and we're hoping to have it installed within the next several weeks. I am here tonight to officially donate that scoreboard to the school systems on Matthew's behalf.
Well, thank you for that, Summer. We just send our thanks to Matt. I know he doesn't go unnoticed when a young man does a lot to give back to his community. And from the sound of it, the amount of money he raised and the help he got from other businesses, it wasn't a small fee then, you should be commended for that, but thank you for being here on his behalf.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Inclusion Matters, that's me, Mrs. Dragonetti.
Thank you. The mission of Inclusion Matters as West Bridgewater's Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy within the school system and opportunities for education and community building through regular workshops and events for parents, guardians and families. On Friday, December 2nd, we will be marking International Day of People with Disabilities with our annual Rock Your Socks Day in the West Bridgewater Schools. Students and staff are invited to support Inclusion Matters with a donation and wear extra funky or mismatched socks to celebrate how being different rocks. In the words of George Day, "Inclusion is not bringing people into what already exists. It is making a new space, a better space for everyone." For more information about Inclusion Matters and upcoming events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
Thank you. Next up, we have the MASC and MASSS Conference Report. Nobody wanted to speak on it. I know Donna talked to me and she told me that she attended the conference. And there's all worthwhile sessions on understanding the mental health crisis and LGBTQ inclusion in schools. Did any of you want to add to that?
I also attended a session on building new schools. It was very informative and there was some good advice on how we might approach a problem and involve the community to get a lot of feedback about what the new building should entail and what kinds of things we want to think about when we're building a new facility.
Yeah, and I went on, went in November 2nd and I served as the delegate at the delegate assembly. There were six resolutions that were presented at that assembly and all passed. Five of them had some debate and went through some revisions. And one resolution just went through straight as it is. And because I am a glutton for policy, I sat in on a policy session that was, I mean, the attendance, people were sitting on the floor in this session, there was so, so much interest in the policy session, which I. But there was a lot of people in there and we just got some best practices, talked about, you know, some of the things that are coming up. And a lot of people just had more like administrative types of questions, which was helpful, being new on the committee and working with rotten on the policies.
Great work for doing that. Next up, Policies to Open Review.
So we have a list here to open for the upcoming meeting in December. So I'm going to move to open the following policies for review. EEA, Student Transportation Services. EEA, Walkers and Riders. EEA, School Bus Safety Program. EEA, Bus Driver Examination Training. EEA, Drug and Alcohol Testing for School Bus and Commercial Vehicle Drivers. EEA, Student Transportation in Private Vehicles. EEA, Motor Vehicle Idling on School Grounds. IHAMA, Parental Notification Relative to Sex Education. And IHAMB, Teaching Without Alcohol, Tobacco and Drugs. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I mean, we just selected these because they're cross-reference policies and we need to review the whole index within three years or so. So this is just what's up next on the agenda. All in favor?
I agree. Approval Policies Voting Issue, Mrs. Dragonetti and Mrs. Muffin.
Okay, so we have a handful to go through. We'll try to make it as painless as possible. So the first one is JQ. I move to, hold on one second, actually, let me make sure I'm doing the right policy here. I'm going to move to adopt the following policy as written and revised. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? We reviewed this and this was opened upon request from somebody who came to public comments two meetings ago, I believe. And so we did review students' fees, fines and charges. Fees and fines and charges are not explicitly stated in the policy. It's just a policy that we have that at times we will charge a fee, a fine or a charge. And we are in line with MASC. We compared it with what the state has and we're following what's recommended. The only edit that we made, and I'm going to actually say this, and it goes for all of the policies, we added a review date at the bottom and a source, so that's it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to move to rescind the policy JLCCB, Particulus is Headlight's Policy. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Could you give a little overview of why it's been?
Sure. And do you want to take this?
Yeah, sure. So MASC no longer has a particulus headlight policy. And we consulted with Nurse Leader Dietrichson and spoke with her about, you know, the history of why, of why we have this policy, why we still had it. And basically the policy that we had is more procedure. And the nurses in each of the schools have their own working protocols that they follow. So in consulting with her, Mr. Bobwell, we're recommending 2% of the policy.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I move to adopt IHAM and IHAM-R, Health Education as Written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Sure. So IHAM is not listed on the policy as a policy on the West Bridgewater Policy Index. However, it is listed on the MASC Policy Index. We'd like to add this policy to our own policy index with the adoption date of today. And then there's IHAM-R, which is also health education, which is on the MASC index. And it is an exemption procedure to IHAM. So basically, we would like to take those two and adopt into our own policy index for a date of November 2nd.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, the next chunk of policies, I'm going to make one motion on all of them because the changes were very minimal. We just reviewed them, made a couple of little edits to match MASC and that was it. So I move to adopt the revised as written policies. EEA, School Bus Safety Program. GBGB, Staff Safety. JCLA, Physical Examination of Students. JLCB, Immunization of Students. JLCC, Communicable Diseases. And JLCD, Administering Medications to Students. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, no, so I was just gonna say, so for EEAE, our edits included on our, on our policy index for West Bridgewater, EEAE, School Bus Safety Program is listed as also being a policy, JICC. However, when we cross-referenced it, it was actually EEAEC on the MASC site. So we will, you know, we'll get to JICC in a couple of seconds, but outside of that edit, we changed the word, some wording, just some, some word smithing from child to student to be more consistent with the MASC policy. And as Robin said, most of the policy, every policy that we went through was basically just word smithing, trying to make things more consistent with, with what they had on the site. We also had JICC, which is
Pause on that one.
Yep, okay, so we're gonna go down there later. The GBGB, which is School Safety, which, which is under the Personnel Section. In comparing our posted policy on the MASC site, we realized that our policy did not have the first sentence, which they had through its overall safety program and various policies pertaining to school personnel. The committee will seek to assure the safety of employees during their working hours through system and maintenance of good health. So we wanted to add that to that, to that policy for GBGB. JLCA, Physical Examination of Students. We had a minor edit. We updated the second paragraph, again, for better consistency with the MASC policy to reflect every student will provide evidence of or will be given general physical examination. So we did that one. JLCB, Immunization of Students. Again, minor edits. We reworded the first sentence to be more consistent with the MASC, MASC policy, which states students registering in the district. What we had was students entering the school for the first time. JLCC, we had communicable diseases. On the fifth paragraph down, we changed handicap child to disabled child to be more consistent with the terminology used again with the MASC policy. JLCD, Administering Medicines to Students. We're changing to, again, be more consistent with the MASC policy, and we made the following changes. We changed the title on the West Bridgewater Policy Index from medicines to administering medicines to students. So it was just listed as medicines, so administering medicines to students. We're also updating the title of the policy itself. So in the policy language, it didn't match the index. So administering medicines to students will be the adopted official title. We're also changing some of the, some really small things to be more consistent with MASC. They had words underlined. We're changing them to be bolded, just like what they have. What we're trying to do is really, where we can mirror what, what is out there with what our policies are. EB, Safety Program, first.
Not there yet.
Yep.
Any other questions on all of those? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. And I'm going to move to adopt the revised EB Safety Program Policy. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
EB. So for this one, there's a few changes. We're rewording the policy again to be more consistent. The first paragraph, we're changing accidents are undesirable unplanned occurrences that can result in tragic consequences by legal harm of loss of school time, property damage, legal action, even fatality to accidents are undesirable unplanned occurrences that can result in tragic consequences. Second paragraph, we changed school plant to school facility. Then after the third paragraph, what you'll see is there's a line, a divider line. And that information is regarding procedural information for the schools regarding crisis handling, which we felt was way too granular for a school committee policy. So it is more specific to the district practices. So what we did is we verified with Mr. Bodwell that this information is, it should be under the Safe Schools Plan. And we're recommending having it removed from our school committee policy as it's more of a procedure than a policy. And having the Safe Schools Subcommittee review and ensure that this is documented properly within our procedures. And we also, as Robin said, updated all the source codes and revision dates to the policy.
Any other questions on that? Pretty big change, but we felt just to be consistent with MASC, we needed to take the procedures out of the policy. We have policies that dictate that the district will have procedures. It's not our job to actually create and vote on the procedures. So no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And my last motion, I move to adopt EEAEC, Student Conduct on School Buses and JICC, Student Conduct on School Buses, as reviewed and revised. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Sure. So these policies are identical. There's a couple of things that we do want to change. First, although it's not, as, as I've said many times, we want to be as consistent as poss, as possible. We're not going to be like this. We talked with Mr. Bodwell, and we're going to be adding a line to the second paragraph, which refers readers to the school handbooks. So we're going to be adding to the current policy, that with, with the MASC policy, excuse me, as consistent with the guidelines for student behavior on school grounds, detailed expectations for students, student conduct on school buses will be listed in the student handbooks. Second, we're going to, again, there's a divider line on these policies as well. And we're going to be removing that as what we realized when we were going through the verbiage under that divider line was that, you know, the bus conduct and expectations really shouldn't be in the school committee policy. These are things that are in the, the school handbooks. And we are, you know, we've talked with Mr. Bodwell, and he's going to be working with the principals of the schools to make sure that the handbooks are consistent, the verbiage is consistent, and that it's in there. But we, we just felt it was too granular to be in the policy.
Any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's it, the policy.
Beautiful. Warrants, Warrant Subcommittee Report, Mrs. Dragonetti.
The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023. Bill warrants on October thirteenth, 2022, for seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. On October twentieth, 2022, for one hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and two dollars and ninety-one cents. And on October twenty-seventh, 2022, for one hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty cents. The following two payroll warrants, on October fourteenth, 2022, for five hundred and sixty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-five cents. And on October twenty-eighth, 2022, for five hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. As always, all warrants are public record and once signed are available in the suckings office for review.
Thank you, Mrs. Dragonetti. Public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. Seeing no takers, we'll move on to other news. For a listing of upcoming important dates, times, and events, please refer to the school's newsletter or the school website. Well, first, we need to discuss next regular school committee meeting, December fifth. Is everyone in favor of changing the time to 5:00 PM?
Yep.
Yep.
It's for me.
Okay, beautiful. All right. So next regular school committee meeting date, December fifth at 5:00 PM in the Middle Senior High School Learning Conference. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.